It is seven o'clock and I'm going to call to order the special business meeting and budget proposal of the New Market School Board will begin this meeting as we do all others with the flag release. So if you can hear me now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few, two short things to talk about on the special business meeting agenda. We had spoken last week at our board meeting about the impact fees and voting to get meet with the town council for them to vote on us to be allowed to use those for the building project to retailing product facilities as allowed under impact fees. We are waiting for some feedback from the town on that and so I think we need to defer that until next week so we have all ducks in a row before we vote and then proceed accordingly. So we'll do that, we'll move that to next week's agenda. And then the second thing is the approval of the manifest that we did not do last week. There are a couple sets of them in there now, if you can take those, I appreciate it.
There are two manifests here. One is 11-18 and we'll have them go through all the detail. The total of the manifest including bond payable which was four million dollars is five million five hundred eighty-nine thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety cents.
You have a motion for Mr. Zink, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion for Mr. Zink and a second from Ms. McKenney to approve the manifest as listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next, with that we will...
That was the first one.
I forgot about that, I'm sorry.
Okay, I also looking for approval with the payroll of eighteen manifests of nine-twenty-eighteen and ten-four eighteen. In the total, the owes manifest is three million six hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred eighty dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second.
A motion for Mr. Zink and a second for Mr. McKenney to approve the manifest as listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now we are safe to proceed. Thank you all for your patience with me.
During the special business meeting.
I seek a motion to adjourn the special business meeting.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. McKenney and a second from Ms. McKenney to adjourn the special business meeting at seven oh four. All those in favor rejoining say aye. Now we'll open our workshop at seven oh five and I would like to read the district mission statement again as we get in the mindset of the budget and the impact that our decisions will have on the students. "The New Market School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education. We ensure a safe and successful learning community. We embrace diversity and respond to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We strive to work with the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society." We have with us Jason Carrick, the technology director, Chris Benzoni, the principal of junior senior high school, Lisa and Mauricio, our business manager. Nada is always with us and we're waiting for Brad, the facilities manager. Principal Benzoni, would you like to go first or you guys can decide?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it probably is prudent to begin, well, first with a couple of questions. I appreciate those of you sort of rescheduling last week. We had my own children presenting for their school board in their hometown, it was pretty exciting and also allowed me to get to discuss a ton of topics. So I do appreciate the flexibility of the people on my team and also you all, so thank you very much and I follow that for that scheduling process. I think maybe it makes sense to start with some of the questions that maybe arose today. I'm under the assumption I had a chance to take a look and have some review of what we had presented, you had a team, and I looked at Superintendent Nato and we sort of hashed out, you know, line by line details. So I am sort of prepared to speak my line unless it gives the board to you talking more specific pieces. However you'd like to proceed is uncomfortable either way.
I think for me it's most helpful to have those detailed, keep bearing in mind the questions that you received earlier so that we have a full picture of what and people can confirm or deny or opposition to that. But I think the more information we have on this level of important decision, it's a positive thing.
Now, again, the first, the first sort of, I guess, big figure out in a better phrase would be the increase from a full-time, from a part-time English teacher position to a full-time English teacher position at the high school, which addresses the eighteen-twenty budget guideline and talking about sort of enrollment projections and whatnot. Currently, we are at the high school level, we are at three and a half full-time employees, so three full-time and a part-time employee tasked with assignments in English classes in grades ninety to twelve. At the current time, our average class size is four in ninth grade. English classes are thirteen and a half. Students are in tenth, a little higher, eighteen, English eleven. Seventeen students and four most twelve right now. That looks a little bit misleading because that is the area where we employ our half-time teachers. So it may make some sense to help folks understand that a full-time teaching position is a four-by-four block schedule. You teach a few classes per day with one planning block. You see, one more thing, you know, full-time position at six, six and four in the course of two days. So the proposal that we put forth to keep in mind with some of our class sizes and some of the elective offerings that we continue to offer, that's the reasoning behind the task or the budget increase required to be looking at and go forward. Essentially, the reason we allow us to offer three additional sections of, you know, within our English department to be a combination of English practice and or English electives. Currently, it sort of ties in nicely with your question, talking a little bit about U-LAC instruction. Currently, right now, we have one hundred and sixty-eight different classes of students. So students are enrolled in one hundred and sixty-eight online learning opportunities through one of just one different learning offering, my brother. Of those one hundred and sixty-eight, thirteen of them are taking English classes either for a different area of reasons. First, we might be credit recovery students who are kind of being taught to take the classes, they may have attended once or more and they're reading more credits. So those students, thirteen of them taking English class that they are going to be taking won't fit with their schedule for a million other reasons quite typically or more often than not if there be a scheduling conundrum between being class and physical school technology or, you know, we're sort of limiting our offerings in terms of the size of our school. If we took a look at those specifically, some of the goals here would be, or the outcomes would be, be able to offer three additional sections of English. That could be a combination of, you know, again, English or an elective. So an example for that might be by doing that, we actually would increase the possibilities of our four teachers, four full-time teachers, potentially be able to offer twenty-four sections of English at the high school level or some combination of English and or English electives. Long-term goal for us and for me personally is that we move toward a competency-based model, which we're in the very early stages of. It would be that we would sort of move out of the traditional, you know, you complete English nine, then you take English ten and so on. Some of the conversations I've had with Superintendent Nato and philosophically, we're very much in line with this, to be able to offer sort of more robust offerings that are very interest-based, raise the students in for, and for teachers. A great example of that might be for eleven or twelve grade student has a high interest in British literature or, you know, medieval literature, to be able to sort of pack some of the competencies and standards that are typically addressed in nine, ten, eleven, and twelve English and have sort of more direct or zero within courses that are available to kids. That's a long-term, high in the sky idea, but this would be a nice step in that direction and sort of allows to, as my admin team and I met just on this piece alone, we talked a little bit about small step thinking, but we're going to go to that traditional, you know, one teacher assigned to each grade level. We could even look at that in a way where we would say, hey, everybody's going to teach five classes, you know, traditional sort of course of studies now in nine, ten, and twelve with the ability that for each person to do so many interest days that is attractive to kids. So you've got maybe five classes of an elective. Of course, hoping that again, we look at those thirteen students taking electives or out of that group of kids that are, you know, taking one hundred and sixty-eight different online offerings, we've now potentially opened up sixteen more offerings for kids over the course of two years for grid semester class. So it's a pretty interesting idea and it could come down to be really great for kids.
Chris, I probably missed it, but I know you talked about the ninth grade class size ten through eleven, what's the twelve grade English class size?
Currently, actually, it's a great question. I had it all sort of down there. Class size for twelve, I believe I have it at, let me see right now, there... And that's a, that's a good one to stop at too because right now our twelve graders are not all taught by the same teacher. So for instance, I have one class of eighteen. There are two, one is an AP section which is a little smaller, there's one of those which leaves our half-time, our half-time assignments for that teacher to two additional courses. So there's sixty-four kids in the senior class right now that basically divided closely evenly around those three sections.
Okay. Could you offer two AP courses if you had a full-time, a fourth full-time?
We've, we've discussed and we need to look at the structure of which AP course is the most appropriate. There's AP Lit and AP Comp and right now we offer one. And it may be more appropriate for us to offer the other based on the common course standards that were supposed to be drafted. So could it be more than one AP? We can't call an eleven grade English class a pre-AP class, but for students who are on that track, we do have a section that is typically populated with students who will follow the AP sort of draft, they're showing what kinds of the analysis of other. It'd be hard for me to answer that truthfully.
Is it a possibility?
If not an advanced placement course, something of high rigor. Be more important, high interest.
Right.
So Chris, you're at three point five, looking to go to four?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on English? So that does sound nicely, but one of the other questions that was posed earlier, on the function of the paraprofessional or ed technician over the oversea distance learning opportunities, one of the, one of the items in here in U-LAC Retro Learning Academy is one that sort of gets a lot of name recognition, but I'll sort of use distance learning as the definition because it could be any number of opportunities. Currently, as I said earlier, we've got one hundred and sixty-eight different electives that students are enrolled in and online offerings. What that does is it requires obviously supervision. So currently, right now, I have some full-time teachers supervising one or two sections. Nobody has more than one other than one, we want a full-time teacher. Supervising sections of online learning, which are electives that a school of our size would be really difficult to offer on a large scale, but they're great opportunities for kids. The goal for me again, or for us, would be to, in a more cost-effective way, allow an ed technician to sort of, sort of work through that and offer to like some support, even though U-LAC is typically, or some of the online opportunities are typically student-centered. If students are in a competency recovery setting, they optimize duty of support and enable us with some executive functioning of these things. By increasing the responsibilities of an ed technician to provide for oversight, we're actually able to potentially take the two or three teachers that have that as an assignment now and offer another two or three electives that are in teaching blocks that currently aren't available because they have people who are simply in class. So sort of a two-bird approach. And it's actually not dissimilar to both typing and actually have a similar model that exists.
Has that kicked up when we used this, the number of students taking U-LACs are similar?
It has and it seems like in the last two, it's been an exponential sort of update. And then some of that is we've sort of changed some programming in the pieces as, which is a positive offset, is as more students are involved in different opportunities, whether it be through, you know, CTE programs and not just what happens the next year, but also we have student enrollment in the door CTE program and some other online offerings. It allows more flexibility for a school of our size to provide opportunity for kids that we may not be providing otherwise. So I'm really trying to think about how to operate in a more sort of individualized approach, even though we're sort of limited in resources at times. So we're really trying to gain some flexibility to individualize.
Could it also help if somebody who might be afraid to take a U-LAC, take a BA, whatever, maybe just a BA, it might make those children feel a little bit more comfortable knowing there's somebody there to guide them to go right. It can be overwhelming at times.
I think we find, and one of the things we find it really does depend on which program, but some are sort of, the expectations are as a very student and parent moment and for others, even though that may be the case, you know, the good old fashioned, hey, let's sit down every, every few days and sort of check your progress and then look back or, you know, maybe the students that don't have the same kind of structure as we would anticipate are successful and all that. So yes, I think it could be really helpful. Again, it's sort of a two-bird approach whereas you have that piece, it's most important to support kids and offer to kids, but it's also better than potentially allowing us to open up more license offerings to teachers that right now have some skill and ability to offer more kids. And I foresee that some of these in the realm of both social studies and technology education are absolutely places that we, that we could provide. And the last sort of big ticket question that never crossed my attention was the status of a textbook replacement cycle and where it should be. That's sort of a, again, there's no one to answer for that. We've always, in the time I've been here, we've had that sort of curriculum manual cycle that sort of each department is determined when it's time to re-order text and materials and things like that. We've had some conversations about whether or not a, you know, a cycle doesn't always sort of work for any needs and trying to balance making sound and logical decisions but also making sure that nothing is too outdated. So that's something that, one of the, one of the items here that really sort of pops up and makes this number larger is our county class, for instance, this year. We had run accounting for, I want to say four or five years. We brought it back and we had whole belonging enrollment, so there were twenty-one students that were still in school. Probably about five or six more than they anticipated. We were, actually, probably more. So that's, that's a pretty good showing, and our indications are that's something that will continue. And again, Superintendent Nato and I had conversations about even within the math, you know, moving away from that first grab, you have to take now one, then geometry, now two, but offering three or four friends other than that and three or four involving most students placed in that. So I think these are good signs for great work. I'm actually very excited about that. So in that, I don't want to get lost in the place.
I guess I could ask you one question.
Yeah, but there are times, so for instance, we realized that our books for that course were outdated now, that did fall into the curriculum cycle to wait and updating material. So those are decisions that we have to make as, you know, with our teacher leaders, myself and our admin team. So that's interesting. One of the other interesting changes that we're sort of living through is, you know, the old school thought that we're in traditional textbooks. Now we're sort of moving into online licenses and I try to be really, this year, responsibility on me to make sure we didn't lose that term, but so one of the things that we've sort of pushed in a good way, of course, is starting, you know, when we order texts or materials, we're ordering licenses and for instance, that we've gone through a larger one platform with a lot of tech, new buying licenses rather than textbooks. You know, some of the books printed, especially in history, some of the social sciences, the books are almost outdated as a phenomenon. So what, some of the better licensing options for us has been by a classroom set of materials for the days when technology's made not available and some, I guess, you know, what their job is to bring technology to class. The one classroom set available, the licensed, typically some of the better licenses we've looked through actually offer updates for the first five years. So you're, in my mind, that's to meet a much better quality and much better use of funds to buy something that can, that can be online to take within the five years that you have the license. So it's sort of shifting the thought, they're not always actual textbooks, but we are, we are sort of working through that piece, it's been pretty exciting in the last. The other piece is if I sort of did a history lesson, as we phased out French and faith and Mandarin, I used, put out more offerings in Mandarin and Spanish. So we need four and then we got Spanish three and then Spanish four, Mandarin three, Mandarin four. None of the Chinese classes we had five years ago. That's another sort of cost for some of the paper. Those are a problem. So it sort of explains some of the bigger ticket items, but again, I'm implying that any answer I can specify that is, which is definitely out.
What's my, my big thing with the halftime? Makes sense to me.
Good morning, Mr. Carrick, would you like to proceed?
First one is our six-way free line, that's info, description, shares in the D.
Tab six in your binder.
What was that?
Alright, yeah, I was going by the presentation gate, the overview.
Yeah, yep, alright. So what was the name?
Tab six in your binder, the green, second green tab.
It has a rule on this kind of.
Alright, so third page in, actually might be the fourth page, Oregon mine, six forty-six. Info, services, computer fees. So that one goes up and down a few times. We remove a few things this year. One of them was flat board connect to replace with our new website. Has this functionality built into it? Some added value there. Give me a campus, online registration. That's something we're starting this year and hopefully by the end of the year will be, or will be, got them running. Something we will start using next summer. So here it's been, point the pen to the website and you can hit a little that way. Let's look for that line. Software is another line that went up a few thousand, probably about ten thousand dollars and that's because we have to go from Windows seven to Windows ten. Windows seven goes into like a share, like an exchange or a connection. So it's going to be a lot of legwork for us, but that's, that's why that decrease there. New equipment, furniture, a little bit of zero. And then we have replacement equipment. It's always the big one. At the elementary school, we have the twenty-two thousand there and that is for our one-to-one Chromebooks for grade five, every fifth grade next year. And this year, we see the brand new Chromebook. Up for replacement next year is our NES computer lab. Twenty-six computers in that room.
How old are the computers in the elementary school?
Depends. So in that lab, they're in year number six right now. Last, you know, normally we replaced them last year, weren't giving us any problems running an extra year. But this year, we're trying to see some, you know, some more repairs. So definitely times to replace those. And we also have PCs, two computers in the classroom over there, which all the teachers, all the students are using Chromebooks now. The demand for those licenses, it's not running there anymore. So when they are for replacement, we'll probably there, purchase more Chromebooks to the classrooms or figure that out when we get there. But the likelihood of putting more desktops, PC's back in the classrooms is unlikely. The junior high, we've got fourteen science desktops, just sort of about throughout all our science classrooms and then use those for, with the probes that they use.
Right here.
Yeah, so they have, they require Windows operating system, so what those will look like, most likely they won't be desktops, it could be a mobile lab that can travel around between rooms. Next is the network switching. This is a big ticket one. Front lead, our switching is in year number six and that's every switch. Right now we have about twenty switches at our junior senior high school, which we need to keep up and running.
Does it switch?
It's our network switching, so it's all our, all the ports in the wall. It powers our access points, it powers our cameras, telephones. In the new design, we've gone through, Artis and I, reduced the port count. You know, you don't need six to eight ports in a classroom anymore and everything is wireless. But telephones in all the classrooms, all of our access points and cameras, they need to get powered over a network switch, but we still have, you know, still need to provide some switching, even though we've reduced the count, I think, like, almost by half. So that's, that's everything. And what this will also allow us to do, when we make the, our data centers move, so where all of our network switches live, it's going to move down the hallway. So by purchasing these switches next year, we can build up that new data center without disturbing things right now. Keep everything running. The other two pieces in there, the network firewalls, those have gone into sale, so at some point, at the end of next year, they'll start providing new code for those appointments. So those are for renewal. And then at the high school is our one-to-one Chromebook issued for grade nine. About eighty devices there. And again, some science desktops for the high school as well. So where are we one-to-one now? Five for twelve. And we have about four, four parts from grades K to four. So, oh, I see you're replacing, I got you. Yeah, so additionally, what we do is take all of our existing carts over the past two years, all goes into the grades, you know, eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade, given use here. Now everyone has a device, next year will be the first year that we just do a bit for in ninth grade, which make a roll out a lot, a lot smoother.
No, Jason, I know that you guys with the additional staff, you know, major things are happening with the building stuff happening as well as the website reboot and all the neat things that that can do. So I think, you know, it's amazing what you two have been able to accomplish, so thank you for all of that. We appreciate it very much. Any questions for Jason about technology? Alright, we'll move to you, Mr. Morrow.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll try to make mine short so we have that sound. So most of our budget increase... So most of our budget increases over the rest of the year is really reflective of the needs for the expanded schools, additions at our schools, and expanded service agreements, and additional custodian that's based on a half a year this year, or this fiscal year and be a full time, the year after, to cover the added fifty thousand square feet of the building that the student needs to maintain. Some of the questions that I, I only had a couple of questions that were asked, and one was about service agreements, and one was about roofing. And so we do have several service agreements, and several of those increase every year as part of their regular plan. And just to, just to give you a quick idea of the type of services we have in place or agreements, we trash recycling, we have HVAC controls, we now have stormwater maintenance that we put into place, we have elevators, we have landscaping. Keep in mind, we're picking up a lot more lawn area and a lot more landscaping that we're gonna have to maintain with the new furniture. We have fire detection and alarms, we have camera systems and access to maintenance and service agreements, we have fire protection service agreements, we have electrical service work agreements, we have fire extinguisher, emergency lighting agreements, we have roof system maintenance agreements, and we have propane contracts. So as all of those are out there, and as we build to the buildings, we start to see increases in these areas. And now, the modern equipment that you're gonna see at the high school is a large increase of what we had before, so we have to start taking up the cost of that maintenance for those. Lawn care is a great example. We did have stormwater system in place prior to. So now we're picking up a total of one retention pond, two, three underground storm tech retention areas, and a rain garden that all have to be inspected and maintained, as well as another fire retention area at one of the other schools, the elementary school. So that unfortunately is a specialty, and so we do have to contract that. So that kind of gives you an idea where we're seeing those increases. And as we expand the buildings, we need some more fire detection, inspection, and things like that that we have. The other question that that we brought up is about roofs and roof schedules. We have a pretty detailed report that we create, and update regularly. So if you remember, this past summer, we replaced what we referred to as roof number three at the high school. And what's slated in this particular budget is looking at roof number four, which is actually the old nineteen-twenty-five's building. Ironically, being the oldest building doesn't have asbestos-containing materials in the roof, because it was replaced after that, it was stripped properly. As we look at a lot of these roofs, we're looking at replacements in some areas of two thousand thirty-four, two thousand forty, two thousand thirty-eight. So we're, we're still ways out on some of these that are still under warranties, and we can keep up with that. And we're picking up a few more new roofs. So, so for instance, the roof three that we replaced is a twenty-year warranty roof. We projected at thirty years, well, that's two thousand forty-eight. So we do keep track of that, we keep all the records on that, so that we know exactly where we are, and when, when they're looking at it. But the good part from the majority of this is we're not gonna be looking at next year to a really kind of huge roof projects that we have. The biggest one is singing, here with that roof number four. And we're actually, I'm gonna be looking at approaching that slightly differently, and just a direct replacement, we're gonna be looking at that as a recertification, which could save us some money. And what that, what that is, is we have a company come in, and they redo all the seams and joints, and all the flashing around that, and they give us any warranty on it. We can't get a twenty year, we get a five and sometimes a ten, depending on condition. But that is a lesser expense to be able to give any more to the customer. So that's, really, my budget's pretty simple. So other than that, where we have those increases are just kind of things. Serving water will up, and it will continue to go up as the increase would be.
I will say, I was in the new parking lot on, yesterday, and I was seeing the drainage work, and it was working quite well. It was very interesting to see the pitches come, exactly where they needed to come, which is what you would expect, but it was doing it, so it's sort of neat. Any questions for Greg?
Great, great, thank you. Mary, if you want to do transportation for us?
Sure. So, uh, I need seven hundred for your first tab. Well, I can't print this, or some write sheet does it all. Twenty-seven hundred, saving fees of eighty-three thousand dollars.
Yes.
About half of that is the contract itself, the ten percent expectation increase, and the other half is projected for an additional plus. We are, right now, at our elementary school, we operate two runs for two of our buses. Buses arrive between seven forty-five and eight twenty-five, which means students also leave between three and three-thirty at the end of the day. And so, yeah, the boys heard feedback from folks this year around that. We have a slight enrollment increase projected in both buildings for next year, slight, modest. But again, I think just as a precautionary measure, it's worth having some additional funding in there, so that you can maintain buses beneath capacity, and also have the flexibility if people decide to be more important, we're done.
So that provides with another bus driver, bus expected to be.
Correct.
And is that just based on this year, because you had the added bus people due to the black parking, do you think? Or is this something that we're going to see more, more students taking the bus?
I think the numbers of students taking the bus have been very consistent across the elementary school, and our impression is largely consistent across the junior senior high.
I agree with that, because I figured previously that could be a much older company. So are there issues in the capacities of the bus, but also, I guess, windows of the bus arrival would pick up, and in an extra bus would essentially include it on that?
Give you flexibility to include it on that.
Do you have to, Mary, do you have to commit to the bus company by a certain time? Or can you, is this something you could?
You can add it. Again, there's a, you know, we know there's a statewide, and regional, and national, frankly, bus driver shortage, so their ability to hire, train, and have someone onboard is a month-long process. So if that's something you wanna do, you probably wanna commit, you know, end of school year, in order to have someone in place for start of school year. You know, I know when we talked about it at a board meeting a couple of months ago, they felt that early, if they could potentially have someone onboard, if that's what the board had requested, would have been a summer. So there's a gap.
You know, this is, as we get to this point of going through all the different parts of the budget, you know, what I'm sort of thinking about, and what I think we all need to, is sort of looking at the overall tax implications of everything that's happening. We have a contract coming up that's not quite finalized yet. We have the bond that's out there, that people are getting their first tax bills for the first time with it. And, you know, where are the areas with the budget that we can modify, say things? And I think that all of us need to really take a hard look at this budget over this next week, before we come back, and with questions that you might have, to look at some, some options that we have in those areas. Because it's, it's, there're gonna be some large numbers.
I thought it was really that hard with my last question about the bus thing, and frankly, I don't know, you know, the particular bus rule or timing, or whatever. You know, we did have some feedback earlier in the year, and I wasn't sure whether that was in part of the result of roofs maybe just shaking out.
Right.
Which I imagine happens if we fall, we may feel a little adjustment as things pan out, and we will actually do that to experience with that year's students.
Students, drivers, everyone has to get affirmative to stuff, because they're new people on roofs. No, I, I thought that's what you were asking that month, I did. Because it, that, those are the types of things that we have to really think about. You know, pros and cons of adding that additional drive. The, the increase in the, in the rate is gonna be what it is, because we agreed to the contract. So that part of it is gonna be there regardless. So the question becomes, in that particular case, the additional bus, the additional drive, the additional expense there. But I think there's some other areas and other parts of the budget that we can, you know, dig a little bit more deeper in to see what makes the most logical sense. Allowing us to provide the best educational opportunity for the kids, obviously, but also bearing in mind the impact that this is gonna have on the taxpayer. Any thoughts about anything else?
So we had brought information on food service and grants to share with you as we pressed it, but maybe we can just go home.
Yes, please do. Unless you wanna stay.
So don't wanna bear it, start your days.
Great, thank you. For addressing that, Mary, thank you for addressing us today. And thank you for coming in and sharing with us.
Thanks.
Jason, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Michelle, there was, I was, one other thing, Mary, that I'll just tell. One of the things that I was, I had missed out the first time, but we were asked to sort of weigh in on how the social piece is going.
Yes, yes.
It's typically, we wanna separate the person from the position when we're talking about these things. I have to say, it's really difficult to, our school social, as a human being, phenomenal addition to our staff and our district, the work that she's done, but what the program has brought to kids, and the work that she's brought to, I'm sure Sean had a chance to go through it. It's been, so I did sort of wanna give a chance, it was in my notes, and I.
No, I'm glad that you said that, Chris, because that's one of those things that people might say outside of the public, and say, is this necessary? But from you and from Sean last week, with these two months that she's been in, that this individual has been in place, there has been a positive impact on the community.
It's been valuable, and.
Sorry, I have trouble.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and I'm glad that you brought that up.
You guys can't leave here. No.
Also, can you just?
See ya. Thank you for coming.
Come again. I just chef's on the screen.
Thanks, Chris.
Talk to the camera.
Thanks, Tim.
Don't care, my lady.
Chris.
So food service, I just passed around one chart, but I just wanna say, leading into it, I didn't bring the detail behind food service. Food service has been for years one number on the revenue sheet. However, it's a significant part of budgets, over three hundred thousand dollars of budget. And the reason we don't give it a lot of airtime is because we always show it as tax neutral, that we have revenues to offset the expenses. Well, that's been going on for some years, and expenses have been climbing. And primarily, the expenses have been increased due to elections of individuals for benefits, medical benefits. Food service is made up of two major components. Sixty percent of it is salaries and benefits, their dues and fees they have to pay, lightly some travel. Primarily sixty percent of salaries and benefits, the other forty percent is the cost of the food, and associated supplies for the food. So looking at a projection with the food service director, we're seeing an increase of almost forty-five thousand dollars year over year in expenses, and it's primarily due to health benefits. In prior years, health insurance, whether the people collected it or not, it wasn't budgeted for. Well, looking at if we need to cover those costs, I'm proposing that we cover that cost in the general fund. Reason being is, if we look at this chart that I just handed out to you, the fund balance is what you have left after you bring in your revenues and your expenses, it's what you exist on. And generally, a good fund balance would be a few months of expenses. So expenses run about twenty thousand dollars, but our fund balance is, right now, down to eighteen thousand dollars. So the fund balance is, is there, but not in the best shape. What I'm looking at as well is the revenues are starting to, although they increase, you see over the years, will stay the same, the director sees that we are having a decline a bit of student sales, but even a five thousand dollar decrease, which isn't, it isn't significant in some regards, will eat into that fund balance. And that's what we've been doing to cover any change between revenues and expenses. So to the extent we don't have enough revenues coming in, and we have our expenses, in order to not tax the taxpayers, we have to take it out of fund balance. But our fund balance is slowly being depleted, and we're where it was. And even when it, even five years ago, thirty thousand wasn't significant fund balance to speak of. But for real, we've had change in a couple individual benefit elections, which is going to bring an additional twenty thousand dollars across that we didn't have this year. And revenues, even if they're off, five thousand, that's another, sorry, twenty-five thousand dollars. So we would be depleting that fund balance, and we would have no reserves. So my proposal is to leave the food service number at three thirty-five, four hundred, with offsetting revenues, so there's no tax impact. However, that expense for that health insurance needs to go somewhere. Last year, the general fund provided, did a fund transfer of three thousand dollars to offset some payment, or lawn payment of funds by some families. So we're seeing some, we're seeing that increase as well. Free and reduced numbers, we're, we're just at the brink of not getting extra money from the feds. So we can't really count on that for some reason. But at the same time, that isn't going up, the people aren't paying either. So there's, there's something changing in the food service world, and it's just happening this year.
And the family.
Yep.
Who, who contacts?
So initially, the food service director. We have a policy that we follow, so there's a letter that goes out, and then the principals get involved, and then it would have to come back through this office to the superintendent.
And do we offer them a pretty much program and say this?
Absolutely, yes. And I've even offered to the director, I said, perhaps if they need help filling the form out, if it's not one of us, if they want, you can, you know, engage with somebody to help them, someone even at the state, just so they're comfortable filling it. So, um, yeah, I can't say.
Yeah, because I've been asking over the years, asking them, just because it's, it's a large chunk of money that we end up having to pay, the families aren't paying. There are families that cannot pay.
Right. Now, the principal has a principal's fund, they sometimes assist, but I'm not sure how they.
We received donations the last couple of years, offset unpaid fund balances as well. And I think the challenge is, yes, families can't pay, but they also may not be eligible for free reduced lunch, right? There's a sort of threshold there where you may not qualify because you leave the income guidelines, and yet.
You have other expenses to take care of in the home.
Right.
You have to make a choice. You know, the child.
We do know that there was some precedence years ago, when health benefits were being paid through the general fund, but then there were changes in benefits, and so as people came off of taking benefits, that sort of went away. And when those were reinstated, they were charged back to the food service line. But it is fairly typical of school districts to offset at least some portion of the food service fund funding through the operating budget. Some places pay for the director's salary and benefits entirely, some places pay health benefits for all of the employees, there are variations. But again, the dollar figure, or estimate is, is forty thousand dollars that would be moved into the general fund.
So if you wanna. All of it to offset health insurance, offset director's salary, offset.
This one, forty thousand dollars.
Food expenses. I mean, there's, it's primarily salaries and benefits, and then you have the food costs.
But the, one of the bright sides is, our kitchens will have essentially all new equipment for the next school year, so there are some repair costs that have been charged against those lines, some have been absorbed as well into the general fund. I mean, prior years, some of those had also been charged against the food service budget, so.
And I think that's why some of that fund balance has been depleted over the years, because repairs have been charged right to food service.
Is there, is any of this priorities, or is it one of food services that's been carved out this way?
It's a separate fund, so it always is. You have your general fund, yes, yes, for the state, yes. And the same in the federal, and the same where we do grants separate. So, and you'll see on the revenue sheet, we have the general fund, we have food service, special revenue, grants, funds. And then just because of our, I put the bond separated and it is tracked in a separate fund as well.
Are you appealing to the general fund for a portion of it? Is that, is that consistent?
That's very common.
Yes. But I mean, what's the degree you can do that to it?
There's no, there's no, I don't know if I can ask that, but I think there's limits to what you can subsidize.
Just for accounting purposes, you have to, you have to separate it out, is that it?
Yes, and for, for funding because it's free and reduced guidelines and federal reimbursements, state reimbursements.
You have to, you imply you have to be able to tell them how much we spent on it, essentially.
It has to have its own reserve balance. So that's why it has to have its own fund, because in the fund accounting, every fund has a reserve. So we have a fund balance, when I do the MS five at the end of the year, I tell you what the fund balance is for the general fund. That doesn't include the fund balance for food service, it doesn't include grants. Grants are break even. You expend, we receive, and we spend over.
Do you think they can add the general fund or show the revenue?
No, show as a direct expense in the general fund.
No, I'm saying on this food service fund analysis, the contribution from the general fund, would that show up?
Oh, no, 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 just be less expenses that we would incur. So if our revenues do grow and our expenses are the same, your revenues are not going to grow because the general fund funded it, it's just less expense. So this chart will, the three fifty-seven would be forty thousand lighter and then your fund balance will go mathematically, plus of that, right? We don't transfer the money over. We did that to offset the expenses for non-payments, but that's it.
So is, if I'm understanding things correctly, which is very possible or not, the challenge is if we take the fund balance to offset this deficit, this forty thousand dollars, then we're leaving ourselves vulnerable for other challenges potentially?
Well, you don't want this to go in the negative. So, and the reserve is minimal. Generally, you would have a three-month reserve for expenses.
You can provide them with a detailed projection, with a detailed projection based on commodities, salary and benefits. Working through all of those pieces shows, projects the deficit for next year, forty thousand dollars. And so that's why we're suggesting that that be moved into the general fund. We're going to be absorbing potentially pieces of that this year as well, but.
We're going to use part of that eighteen thousand this year, that's, that's why we're concerned. Because this year, we had increased expenditures over that three fifty-seven, we're going to be higher this year.
But the fact of the matter is, this analysis really shows the state of the food service.
Yes, yep.
And that's what I like about it. I mean, the fact that it's going to run in a negative says to us, why is it turning in a negative, is there anything you can do about it?
Because you could already see last, seventeen, eighteen, so expenditures were higher than earlier.
Yep.
And then I'm told expenditures are going to be close to three eighty this year because of elections for health insurance that weren't there in seventeen, eighteen.
It doesn't make, it doesn't make a big difference to me.
Now, we could drive our revenues up and our sales and, but at the same time, you have to watch that because you have to.
Your food costs, your labor costs.
Yeah, labor, it's a whole balancing act.
Again, it's not a big deal to me. I happen to like it the way it is because it shows the state of food service expense.
And it's a conversation, it's trending negative.
So just as a matter of learning, because I know nothing about this, and you said you want to have your, your ending equity fund be negative. I'm going to ask a late question here, why not?
Because you have a deficit, because you're not making, because that money has to be raised somehow and have to go to taxation. So what I, what I would do is if you don't put the, say you didn't put the.
You'd be anticipating a larger fund transfer at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I would put a line in the general fund that says transfer to food service.
But I mean, the money, the money's coming.
We have to make it up.
Yeah, so if you put it negative, you have, I can't leave it negative. So the fund has to be break even.
Pardon for these questions, I'm just trying to learn, but.
No, no, no.
You can't leave it negative because of, is that to do with the federal funding?
Laws, laws.
So on that line, though, is there certain levels that are optimal for, for giving maximum federal funding, or is it?
Free reduced lunch percentages. And we don't control that, it's based on the percentage of people in the community qualified, based on their income levels. And we've seen a decline in that over the past couple of years. We saw that in our adequacy numbers.
And meal choice, so if some of the high school kids would rather have it alibi, separate things versus the meal, you have to have, you get reimbursement only on meals.
So, so this ratio here doesn't have anything to do with federal, it's free reduced meals?
Well, I didn't show, I didn't want to complicate it anymore than, I think it's not complicated, but we don't talk about it a lot. So there's a lot of other things to it. So the revenue side of it has various components. The revenue is declining, expenses are going up, so.
Because I recall, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we did the same thing with graduation department years ago, with running a guidance. And, and what we did was to increase fees to the point where we began to pay for it because the same discussion came up then, is why don't we fund administration out of the recreation fund?
Well, that's a great point. It's on our ability to increase lunch fees, right? Unlike for recreation, which is an optional service, we're required to provide a school nutrition program. And in order to do that, we're capped on what we can charge per meal. There's a whole formula.
As a paid lunch, so.
The only thing we can manage is that.
Correct.
That's, that's a big part of it.
To your point, if you, I mean, if you keep increasing the cost of lunch, people are already having trouble paying for it. So that will get worse, that costs, so this.
It doesn't matter anymore.
So, so for now, I have left it flat, three thirty-five, four, and show that we're going to have revenues to offset that. However, I built, built in forty thousand dollar change on.
So we'll bring you for your next meeting, updated sheet, but that reflects that forty thousand dollars being moved in. We also, since we did our first round draft for you, have had some additional changes in employee health benefit elections, that you have about another fifty thousand dollars. We expect that there will be some offset with health insurance savings, but we also discovered when we were reviewing those health insurance numbers from our first draft, that we had inadvertently eliminated the vacant positions of elementary schools, we were even the retired positions, but we thought it might have been. So that was also discovered this way, and we're taking the health insurance.
So there's one lost position.
So we'll have those updated numbers for you, we showed health insurance projections yesterday, so we'll make those adjustments for you for next week. The question is, what else do you need?
I mean, I would say, you know, look over stuff and get questions in before next week so that we can have a robust discussion and sort of chew on all this stuff for next week. Any other thoughts tonight?
Well, grants is staying flat.
I understand.
I do review, conservatively, we have some slight decrease, but then we expect to get a new grant next year, Title Four, but to be conservative, I think that's just going to be new flat.
We don't usually get visibility on our federal grant numbers until spring.
I don't, it dropped the year before last and has held steady at the low level, but I don't expect.
It's usually a two-year timeframe, but, so those could fluctuate, but right now, what we're hearing is that they should remain, with the exception of data.
Any other thoughts? Well, then I see a motion to adjourn this workshop at eight o'clock.
So.
Motion to adjourn this, continuing, second to the present, to adjourn at the workshop at eight o'clock. You can be next week at seven in the town council chamber. All those that they were adjournings, they are. Workshop adjourned.